Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for September. This is our only official meeting. I'd like to announce that the Board met an executive session on some real estate matters and some legal matters prior to this meeting. I'd also like to announce that this is the first Board of Commissioners meeting that's being fed live to the township. Instead of being recorded and then replayed, it's being played live. So we are live this evening for the first time in the history of the township in our new building. The technology has caught up, and so we welcome those people that may be not able to sleep at 7 o'clock this evening and are watching us live for the first time. So Mr. Gentile, would you please call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio?
Here.
Mr. Oliva?
Here.
Mr. McCluskey?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. McGarrity?
Here.
Dr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
And Mr. Wechsler?
Here.
Chief, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance before we get going? Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's my pleasure at this time to introduce our state representative from 163rd District that represents a portion of Haverford Township, specifically the 1st and the 9th wards, who's here to present his proclamations from the state to our state champions here, as well as we have some proclamations here from the township for the winning team. So at this point, I'd like to introduce Senator Jamie Santoro, or State Representative Jamie Santoro.
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to be here tonight to present these citations. It would've been tough to get all the kids up in the Harrisburg, but we actually set you up. We just went all new fields, that's why they're all here. And it was just a big scheme to get you to agree. We figured we had some strong voices in this audience, but I'm kidding. The Commissioners here are great. They put a lot of support into the Haverford Recreation Department. If it's trails, fields, and many other different programs, these gentlemen up here are the ones who are doing it for you to make sure you have great fields, basketball courts, and everything alike. So let's give them a big hand. So I'm gonna, if it's okay, do one team at a time. I have citations for each of the teams. First of all, I had to bring a handcart to get all these citations in, which that's pretty amazing. Hilltop, you and Haverford softball, you guys are absolutely amazing. The fact that you were able to bring this many state champions and a Mid-Atlantic championship home to Haverford Township, we're all impressed with the skills that have come out of this district, out of Hilltop League, out of the Haverford Softball League, and you should all be very proud of yourselves. And let's give yourselves a round of applause.
Jamie, we're gonna turn that podium around. No, we're gonna, it actually rotates, yeah.
It's lockable.
Yeah. Sophisticated stuff.
Whatever it takes, right, John?
All right, let's start with the U-10 baseball. Are they here? Come on up. Anybody on U-10 baseball?
Yeah. Mario, would you join? Mario, I'd like, why don't you come up with us?
I'm gonna read one of the citations, and they're basically pretty repetitive for each, just fill in your own team. But whereas the House of Representatives of Pennsylvania takes great pleasure in recognizing outstanding achievement realized by the youth of this nation in a spirit and professional sacrifice, personal sacrifice, commitment to a common goal, and unity of purpose, and whereas the Hilltop 10-and-under B baseball team is being recognized upon capturing first place during the 2018 Pennsylvania State Championship, Cal Ripken baseball. The Hilltop 10-U-under boys team won the gold medal by defeating a team from Doylestown with a score of 1 to 0. Under its expert guidance, manager Matt Adam Yoder and assistant coaches Chris Hoffman, Pete Poussette, and Todd Rothstein, the team was comprised of Brian Bossum, Bryce Chetto? Fix it, guys. Connor Griswell, Gabe Denisi, Evan Hoffman, Ryan Kelly, Peter Manaris, Charlie, I'm just going with first names, Sean, Lucas, Freddie, Carson, and Sean. Now therefore, the House of Representatives of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania pays tribute to the members and coaches of the Hilltop 10-U-under B baseball team, as well as all those who assisted upon their championship win, acknowledges their investment of skill and effort in competing on a level which demands perfection, extends best wishes for every future success and personal fulfillment, and a copy of this citation sponsored by myself to be transmitted to the baseball team and their players.
On behalf of the township, the township would also like to issue a proclamation for each of these teams as well. We'll give them to each team. The Hilltop Baseball League falls in the 9th Ward, primarily in the 2nd Ward, so Mario's up here to help me. But whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, takes great pleasure in acknowledging the accomplishments of local youth sports teams, and whereas the Board of Commissioners wish to congratulate the Hilltop Cal Ripken baseball 10-and-under select Pennsylvania state champions for their recent accomplishment, and whereas the following manager, coaches, and players have proven the value of hard work, determination, and good sportsmanship. We'd like to recognize all those men, Coach Hoffman, Coach Poussette, and Todd Reistun, as well as Brian Bosman Jr., players, manager Adam Yoder, Brian Bosman, Bryce Chetto, Connor Griswell, Gabe Denisi, Evan Hoffman, Ryan Kelly, Pete Manaris, Charlie Poussette, Sean Reeve, Lucas Rothstein, Freddie Steigerwald V., boy, that candle keeps going, Carson Uff, and Sean Yoder, proclaimed this 4th day of September by the Township of Haverford, attested by the Township Manager Larry Gentile, President Bill Wechsler. So thank you, guys.
All right, guys, take two steps forward up to the left here. Coaches and Mario, Bill, Phil. Come on in, coaches. Parents, go at it, if you want photos. All right. Let's get the next team up here. One more. Is Hilltop 14-U softball here? I have a Haverford Township one, too. I have the wrong box, but the right citation, so we're good. All right. This is actually the Haverford Township softball, and I also want to congratulate them. They had another amazing season. Again, everything is pretty much the same, a lot of whereas and therefor's and all that good stuff, but I want to acknowledge each of these young ladies and their manager Greg Cunningham, coaches Jim Bauer, Robert Bergman, Brian McGeehan, and the team who's comprised of Kathleen Lenz, Alexa Bauer. Did I say it right? Or am I down one? Alexa Hoffman, Kira Bauer, Jules McGeehan, Alexandra Valera, Arianna Rosavage, Marissa Cunningham, Tyler Campbell, Lauren Bergman, Gianna Muscatello, all right, Madison Burrell, and Claudia Stuck. Congratulations.
While Jamie's handing out, we also like, from the township, the Board of Commissioners, take great pleasure in acknowledging the accomplishments of local youth sports teams, and wish to congratulate the Haverford Township Softball League 14-and-under Babe Ruth state champions for their recent accomplishment. And we offer congratulations to manager Greg Cunningham, coaches Jim Bauer, Bob Bergman, and Brian McGeehan, as well as the young ladies, Kira Bauer, Lauren Bergman, Maddie Burrell, Tyler Campbell, Marissa Cunningham, Alexa Hoffman, Katie Lenz, Jules McGeehan, Gina Muscatello, Arianna Rosavage, Claudia Stuck, and Ally Varela. Congratulations, young ladies.
Now, I would tell the girls to step forward, but I think Mario's the only one that can stand behind him, so we'll be standing next to them and get a nice, good picture. Thanks, Mario.
Somebody lift Wechsler up there.
Thank you, ladies. All right, Hilltop 8-and-under baseball. All right, again, we want to congratulate this team. You guys had an amazing season, and you went on to win the state championship, and we're all really proud of the accomplishment that you brought back here to Havertown. And the team is comprised of J.D. Amorosa, Gavin Anderson, Sean Brown, Will Brown, Colin Buckton, Johnny Gillen, Mike Kearney, Grady McCormick, Jude Murphy, Sean O'Reilly, Dave Reinst, Reinsten, and Patrick Sheridan, along with their coaches and their manager Tom Buckton, Brian McGuire, Dave Reinsten, and Dave Anderson.
Again, the Haverford Township, congratulations to the 8-and-under Hilltop Cal Ripken baseball 8-and-under Southeast Pennsylvania state championships. So congratulations, coaches, young men. We appreciate your effort and your sportsmanship. We'll get their names out of here. So our players are J.D. Amoroso, Gavin Anderson, Sean Brown, Will Brown, Colin Buckton, Johnny Gillen, Michael Carney, Grady McCormick, Jude Murphy, Sean Riley, David Reinsten, Patrick Sheridan, managed by Tom Buckton, coach Dave Anderson, Brian McGuire, and Dave Reinsten. Congratulations and thank you, coaches, for your leadership.
All right, U-9 baseball?
All right, good, good. Nice to see you. Congratulations. Got another one coming up the chain here.
Yeah, another one coming up the chain.
All right, again, I want to congratulate the 9-and-under baseball team who won their gold medal by beating a team from Boyerstown. So with the expert guidance of their manager Fred Steigerwald, assistant coaches Brian Angelucci, Mike Clark, and Mark Kelleher, the team was comprised of Vincent Angelucci, Connor Clark, Paul DeBono, Rocco Kelleher, Declan Lannan, Henry, we'll go with that, Sean McCabe, Garrett Noonan, JT, Brian, Jake, John, and providing assistance and support to the team was Nick Steigerwald, their bat boy.
We'll read this into the record as well. The Board of Commissioners wish to congratulate the Hilltop Cal Ripken baseball 9-and-under Southeast Pennsylvania state champions. The following managers and coaches have proven the value of hard work, determination, and sportsmanship. Managers Fred Steigerwald IV, coaches Brian Angelucci, Mike Clark, and Mark Kelleher, bat boy Nick Steigerwald, and players Vincent Angelucci, Connor Clark, Paul DeBono, Rocco Kelleher, Declan Lannan, Henry Legandahl, Sean McCabe, Garrett Noonan, JT Placelio, Brian Rawlings, Jake Steigerwald, and John Sullivan. Congratulations, guys. Awesome guys.
All right, guys, take a couple steps up. Take a couple steps up. All right, we're gonna bring one final team up, and normally I would, my parents always taught me, you introduce the ladies before the gentlemen. However, in this case, we have Mid-Atlantic Regional Champions amongst us, so I figured they should be last, and we welcome them to come up now. Ladies? So anybody that doesn't know, this is a really big deal. This team went on, they won the state championship, and then they continued an undefeated season, correct? Undefeated season, so... I am gonna read one of the whereas's. So to its great credit, the Hilltop 8-and-under softball team amassed a stellar season record of 26 wins and 0 losses, and competed against teams from Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Delaware, Maryland, and New York to capture the Mid-Atlantic Regional Title. The team further distinguished itself during the 2018 season by capturing the Babe Ruth 8-and-under Pennsylvania State District 1 and Southeast Pennsylvania 8-and-under softball championships. Under the expert guidance of manager Mike McCollum and assistant coaches Mike Kearney, Eric Ebers, and Matt Brady, the team was comp... excuse me, I am hot. Comprised of Isabella Box, Kaylee Brady, Brenna... Did I mess that one up? Kayla Brady. Brenna Carrefray? All right, we're on the first names. Ava, Bella, Kayla, Kelsey, Samantha, Emma, Maeve, Morgan, and Finley. Congratulations. Real quick, before I present these and move on, are any of the board members from Hilltop or Haverford here? If you are, raise your hand. Look around this room. It's dedication from board members, coaches, managers, that allow these children, and the parents, you most of all. It's so important, without parent support, none of this could happen, so I want to give all of you a round of applause.
And the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford also wish to congratulate the Hilltop 8-and-under girls softball team for their accomplishments by becoming the 2018 state champions with a 26-0 winning season, and their most recent tournament wins include the Memorial Day Hamilton, New Jersey, one-day backbreaker tournament by going 4-0 in that tournament, the Pennsylvania District 1 Tournament, two years in a row, winning this Pennsylvania state tournament, the Brookline Mike Lyden Memorial Tournament, two years in a row, the Mid-Atlantic Regional Tournament, finishing first among all teams from Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Delaware, Maryland, and New York, and the Kimberton, Pennsylvania Tournament, two years in a row. And we congratulate manager Mike McCollum, coaches Mike Carney, Matt Brady, Eric Ebers, and players Isabella Box, Kayla Brady, Brenna Carrefray, Ava Sarah, Bella Sarah, Kayla Ebers, Kelsey Ebers, Samantha Hipper, Emma Carney, Maeve McCollum, Morgan Regan, and Finley Walsh. Congratulations, young ladies.
All right, if any of the Hilltop or Haverford parents and kids want to leave now, you're more than welcome, or you can come stay and listen, there's an entire agenda.
Congratulations to your kiddos.
Well, they just started, my oldest just started first grade.
Okay, so that's about...
Six, he's six, and my youngest is four.
Oh, how was his first day? Was it today?
It's today, because he didn't go to, he went to Tannen Park. He did not go there for kindergarten, so it's a big adjustment for him, because he's not used to all the kids there. But he went, he had a class of, like, 14 kids. But he likes it. Is this gonna be a big adjustment for him?
That happened to my older son when we moved here. He had done preschool at our old house in Montgomery County, so we moved here, you know, it was sort of a shame.
You're welcome, bye-bye.
I heard on the internet, they're calling you something about Barney.
I am Barney, I'm Big Fat Barney.
I think I broke it. We'll come back. Sorry, excuses. No commercial here. See if it works. It's been an hour with this thing. Because it goes both ways.
Thank you to the baseball, Haverford baseball and the Hilltop League. What a great season that they've had. Inspiring to see such play coming from such young people in our community. At this time, since we have them, I'm gonna ask Representative Santoro to come back up and give us an update on several projects in the township.
Mr. Wechsler and Commissioners, thank you again. I think we're gonna have to invite a different team each month so that you guys have some attendance in these meetings, but this live streaming, I guess, works. But in all seriousness, a couple things that I want to give you some updates on. One, I know there was a grant that you applied for back in 2017. I've been going through list of grants for all my districts and my townships and boroughs, and I'm trying to pull them to the forefront, and we are, we made the next round for Haverford Township for a sanitary sewer grant. It's not big money, but every dollar helps. It's about, they, you applied for about $72,000, and if it happens, it looks like $64,000 of it will be approved. So we'll be hearing about that by the end of September, and I will let you know if it gets approved. I've signed off on it today. I sent a letter of support to the administration and to the leadership of both the Majority and Minority Party in the House, and I believe we're gonna be able to accomplish that grant. So I'll have further details for you next month, but it's in the right direction. Another piece, you may have noticed some construction work being done on the ramp of the Blue Route coming off of the southbound entrance of Route 3. They are trying to work on the lane heading the Brew Mall, but also doing some work on the lanes coming into Haver Town. It's very important that this is all part of the discussions we had, myself, Dan Siegel, Steve D'Amelio, Mario's been at the meetings, and others regarding the issues along Westchester Pike. We came together, myself, Senator McGarrigal, Alex Charlton from Springfield, and Marple, and Galen Leach were at a meeting, and I believe somebody from Representative Vitale's office was there as well, working on what we can do to alleviate some of the traffic on Westchester Pike. The unfortunate thing is... That's all I have to report at this time, and as these grants and hopefully the funding for Westchester Pike comes in, I will come back and report on it.
Thank you, Representative Santoro. We appreciate your coming by, and I'm sure the parents appreciate you giving out the state citations to those young people. So thank you again.
Mr. Chairman, can I just bring something up? The Westchester Pike project that the state senator Jamie Santoro is talking about, that's the area that Dan and I attended the meeting in, in Marple. So I just want to remind the board that that was-- that's what this project's about. The one, the meeting that we all attended with Jamie and Galen Leach and Pendot was to look at the concerns that Dan and I had mentioned to this board before. So that's what their project is. Well, hopefully it will be, right? About $5 million that our state representative asked for along with the other state senators and commissioners.
Representatives?
Commissioners.
And the ramp work that was done, that's being done, that was part of the-- can you not hear me?
No. We can hear you, but the people at home can't.
The ramp work that's being done, part of that is the off-site improvements that were required from Marple Associates that put the hotel in and eventually are going to be putting other things in there. I'm not going to get into the details this evening because I don't know if they're all finalized, but that is part of their commitment that they must-- and when I say commitment, they must do off-site improvements. That is all in part of it.
Jamie, do you know when they'll complete? Because they're going to end the ramp going westbound. When are they going to complete that, and when will that light go in? And what's the timeframe?
They've begun the work now, and it's ongoing. It's going to take several months. I mean, if I had to estimate and knowing what it will take to get the light work and everything completed, and then they have to tie it into the overall system along Westchester Pike, because it's all part of that time relay, it's, I would say, November at the earliest.
And, Dave?
I would-- November seems reasonable. Probably even, probably even, I'm not going to be surprised if it even migrated a little bit later.
It could go a little bit.
Because the signal work hasn't really started yet. Ramp, the westbound ramp will close first, I believe.
It's closed.
It's closed.
Yeah. Are they closing?
They've already put the new lane in to turn right, yes.
Yeah, because I've received a number of questions from residents that's not in Haveford Township. We have nothing to do with that.
No, that's Marple.
But the ramp is closed. There is a concrete barrier. They have begun the widening, but we have already seen you go down there on a weekday afternoon, a Thursday or a Friday, and the traffic is now backing up onto the Blue Route because of the stopping at the light.
Because of that third lane, yes.
Yeah, so.
And this was one of our concerns.
And I can't picture it's going to get any better in the short term at least, or even in the long term, because then there'll be a traffic light.
Yeah.
Lock away.
Actually, in the long term, I think it will be better.
With our project.
With your-- yeah, and the-- if the first phase takes place and they allow that second, so one of the ideas that is being put out there is that the existing northbound entrance from Westchester Pike heading west, okay, the entrance, will be a continuous lane, meaning anybody coming up west that made it through the light at Lawrence Road on Westchester Pike or off of Lawrence Road will have continuous entrance to the-- will not have to stop at the next light. They'll have continuous entrance onto the Blue Route. Then the second entrance would be for the people coming from Lawrence Road in Brumall and making the left, and they would be able to continue onto the Blue Route. If that happens, that'll alleviate some of the issue, but please do not be fooled. It will not alleviate all of the issue.
I have a question for Jamie and the engineer. So when we were at the meeting, we talked about adding another lane to go directly into the Blue Route. Is that part of that, or is that--
So this is part of what I'm talking about. Right now, the idea would be to have a continuous lane onto the Blue Route. There are no-- we're nowhere near getting a deck added to the bridge. That's-- now we're talking 20-plus million dollars. But if we get a continuous lane and alleviate all that traffic off of Lawrence Road in Haveford Township, and then alleviate some of the traffic on Westchester Pike, then it'll make a significant difference.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks. Our next item, any Commissioner Committee updates this evening?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Siegel.
Yeah, I want to have-- provide one update and one clarification. As many of you know, during the July meeting, we considered and then tabled an ordinance relating to the issue of beekeeping in the township. In response to that ordinance, this board asked the ordinance committee to consider the issue. We held a meeting that was heavily publicized on the 30th of August in this room. We probably had about 40 people in attendance. About 20 people spoke, addressing the issues, the underlying incident that caused the concern for the township, and other matters. What we did was we learned from that meeting a lot. First, for residents who didn't know, there is a statewide licensing scheme for all beekeepers. There is statewide enforcement with civil penalties as well, so that there is that. The township staff, Ms. Cuthbertson, the Assistant Township Manager, is also working with the state so that we can assure that if there is another incident, that it would be referred. There's actually a state beekeeper who would investigate and take action. We would also want to remind anyone who has a beekeeping business that it is a business, and they should read the township regulations regarding licensing. That said, after the meeting, the committee met as a committee, and we determined that at this point, we do not believe that there is the need for further action by this board on that issue. We are not recommending that this board enact any ordinances. We believe that the remedies available through the state and with proper coordination with the township, our Animal Control Officer, and the state beekeeping regulators, that should be sufficient. And I have one other issue, but I don't know if anyone else has any other comments.
Yeah, I do. First, I want to thank you for hosting that meeting. It was a very informative meeting. Myself, I was there. Commissioner Jim Garrity was there. Kevin was there. Kevin, you were there. So it was very informative. One of the interesting points I'd like to make is that I asked how many people in the audience were beekeepers, because the room was fairly full, and the majority of the people were beekeepers. And why that, to me, for me, was significant was because we hardly heard of any problems. I never heard of any problems. I never would have dreamed there was that many beekeepers here in Haveford. We did have the incident that occurred, I think it was in Jimmy's ward, your ward, and they admit that there was an issue there, but they seem committed to ensuring that that never happens again. So I just wanted to bring that up. I don't know if anybody else, Kevin or--
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else?
Last month, when we were discussing one of the resolutions, there was a question, and I just want to clarify. With regard to the Property Committee, I reported at the March meeting, as reflected in the minutes, that the Property Committee was engaging an expert to give us recommendations. I also went back and reviewed the videotape, and I could say that after I made that comment, no one on the board raised any questions. No one said a word, other than we went on to the next item. So no concerns. Questions were raised about the actions of the Property Committee, and we are proceeding with that consultant. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee updates?
Mr. President.
Mr. Sir.
As this board is aware, we tried the zoning board committee. We tried to join with partners within the other municipalities, specifically Radnor, for the comprehensive plan. We have been unsuccessful, in spite of us, several of us contacting Radnor. Be that as it may, this board will remember that we did budget for this, $25,000 in 2018 budget. So I think that we should just move forward, which I said to Kelly, that we just move forward on our own. And some of you have expressed that anyway, that we should move forward on our own. So I think it's a good idea, and it's budgeted, so we could just move forward. If anybody has any objection to that on the board.
There does not appear to be any.
What do we mean by move forward? I mean, the zoning, is the zoning committee moving forward, or who's moving forward?
Comprehensive plan will go forward without joint partnership with Radnor, I think, is what we're saying.
Kelly, we'd move forward. Kelly, come on up for a second. Just, I guess, enlighten the board as to what the next role would be for--
So we sat a steering committee back in, sorry, I want to say March of this past year, to start coming up with different things, different people that were volunteers in the community that have different specializations, traffic engineers and other civil engineers, et cetera. So we would just move forward with our steering committee and then put out an RFP for a consultant to actually make the report and start the comprehensive plan. So that's where we're at.
How many people are on the steering committee?
Five.
Who are they?
Me, Mr. D'Amelio, Brian Barrett of our Recreation Department, Rich Kerr, who is a traffic engineer, Angelo Capuzzi, who's on our Planning Commission. And I feel like I'm forgetting something, and I'm going to really apologize to that person. But it's been a while since we got together because we've been trying to coordinate with Radnor, which has just not been working out to our advantage. Anyway, there may be one other person.
One of the main reasons why we wanted a partner was, you know, the old more bank for your buck, and especially in respect to grants.
It's looked-- joint comprehensive plans are looked exceptionally favorably when you're doing a grant, but it doesn't do us any good if we don't get the comprehensive plan completed. Ours is, our actual plan is from 1988. We've done a couple updates, a couple amendments, addendums, but the base plan is 1988, and it's so outdated that it's hard to use as a planning tool, being as old as it is. It's just not relevant.
So just--
Thank you.
The next step is the steering committee will hire--
Yeah, is actually get the steering committee together and really get moving on this.
That you would hire somebody?
We do. We would hire a consultant, a planning consultant, by, with, we'll put out an RFP and solicit some, you know--
And is there public input along the way?
Yes, absolutely. Oh, the comprehensive plan has tons and tons of public meetings, but we start just with a base crew to kind of flesh out where we want to go.
Dr. Hart, that RFP will have to come to this board for approval.
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome.
Any other committee updates? Next is the police crime update by the Chief of Police, John Voila.
Thank you, Commissioner. For the month of August, the police crime report, we had 38 criminal arrests. Two of them were juveniles. 283 traffic citations were issued, 47 non-traffic citations, 215 written warnings. We had 36 parking tickets that were written by police officers, 292 automated meter officer tickets, which is a new system we have now. They're handheld, they print them out, and it takes a picture of the license plate and the meter. So we have data to back it up for the tickets, and we're going to add more to them for the officers when they start writing citations, hopefully in the next few months. Aggravated assault with a firearm on the bus route. Two black males approached a victim from behind while he was walking. Victim turned around and had words with subjects. Noticed they had firearms. Suspect was shot, suspect shot at the victim four times. He suffered a grazed wound to his leg. The investigation is ongoing. We believe this is, I won't call it a domestic situation, but it was a workers that, from a business up on Canaline Road, that may have had some sort of dispute, and it was taken out with weapons on the bus route, which is troubling.
Chief, if I could ask, if you could repeat that, especially for the folks in the sixth ward, this is not, this does not appear to your investigation from the outset to have been a random crime, but instead a particular person targeted over an ongoing matter.
That is correct.
Now, that doesn't make it any less violent, but it should at least alleviate some concerns of just random violence on the bus route.
Yes, and like I said, it is troubling. We don't usually see this sort of thing, but I'm afraid weapons, you know, it's the way things are answered in certain ways. But yes, this was a workplace dispute. From what our investigation shows, obviously no one's talking at this point, but the investigation is going on. We had a robbery at Meadowbrook Township. The victim was in the vehicle. This is at the gas station, and the vehicle stopped, and an argument ensued, and the suspect was assaulted, and someone took her purse, keys, and credit card. Arrest warrant was obtained from the suspect, so as soon as they find him, we'll grab him. Unit Block of East Langhorne on 8/21, a house was entered through unlocked windows. Jewelry is missing. Investigation is ongoing. On 8/30, 500 Block at Brittany Lane, a screen was cut, entry was gained, and numerous firearms were taken from the house. This is an ongoing investigation, and I think we'll come to a resolution with this very quickly. I'm sorry to say, once again, our vehicle thefts and our thefts from autos have increased once again since summer has ended and things are moving along. We had 30 vehicles entered in the month of August. Every one of them were unlocked. Not one car was forced open, none were broken ones. Every vehicle was unlocked. We had five arrests, but as I stated in the past, it continues. It's just, it goes on and on and on. Some cars had substantial amounts of cash in them. Other ones had to change, but it's a continual problem. And honestly, we make arrests, and along with the other police departments surrounding us, we're all making headway, but they discontinue. It seems like it's open season to just walk through and go into unlocked cars. We have videos of multiple people. Some are youth, some are adults. We think some are street people. It's just they wander uptown to plan or wander back in the neighborhoods in the middle of the night, and they just trot car doors, so they find what they want. We had two sex offenses. One on Malvern Avenue, it was juvenile family members. The investigation is going on, and there was an indecent exposure, which there's no prosecution. The matter is closed. And along with the vehicle entered, we have bicycle thefts. We had nine total bicycle thefts from open garages or front porches or laying in dry. Four were recovered. We have video of some of the suspects also, but obviously they're very difficult to identify. We have taken means with our officers to work in the back streets to make some of these arrests. We are making headway, but it just, like I said, it continues. Multiple K-9 usages, nine for the month, and one, we went down to Upper Darby and did a search warrant for them, and they located five to eight pounds of methamphetamines along with other ones. We had a vehicle stop where marijuana was located. We had a suspect tracked with negative results, and we had a, obviously up on the busway for tracking up there with negative results. It's a report.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Township Board of Directors, Mr. Anderson.
Unfortunately, it looks like all my fans are left. At least they have the hardcore ones here.
The important people are here.
Exactly.
That's right.
All right, so I've reviewed the expenditures and warrants for this meeting. There are no irregularities, and all my questions were satisfactory answered, but I do have two additional items. At the last meeting, there were some questions regarding the July credit card statement. I went back and reconfirmed that all those expenses were proper. The reason why is a little bit higher than normal. Now, usually it runs around eight to 11 or 13--
We have taken means with our officers to work in the back streets to make some of these arrests. We are making headway, but it just, like I said, it continues. Multiple K-9 usages, nine for the month, and one, we went down to Upper Darby and did a search warrant for them, and they located five to eight pounds of methamphetamines, along with other ones. We had a vehicle stop where marijuana was located. We had a suspect tracked with negative results, and we had a, obviously, up on the busway for tracking up there with negative results. It's a report.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Township Auditor, Mr. Anderson.
Unfortunately, it looks like all my fans left. At least they have the hardcore ones here.
The important people are here.
Exactly.
That's right.
All right, so I've reviewed the expenditures and warrants for this meeting. There are no irregularities, and all my questions were satisfactorily answered, but I do have two additional items. At the last meeting, there were some questions regarding the July credit card statement. I went back and reconfirmed that all those expenses were proper. The reason why is a little bit higher than normal. Now, usually, it runs around eight to 11 or 13 grand. This one was about 18 grand. It was because of some summer trips through the Rec Department, which were normal expenses, and there was about $2,000 spent on security equipment. I also went through our financials, and the audited financial statements are issued, and all my questions were satisfactorily answered.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the auditor? The next item is the Citizens Forum, 20 minutes of registered speakers, and then the floor for agenda items. Our only registered speaker this night is Jen Leith, Chair of the Human Relations Commission, and a yearly update.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I'm Jennifer Leith. Thanks for the opportunity to provide an update. I was here a year ago, letting you know that we were doing an appreciating diversity contest in the high school over 2018 and 2019, which was very well received. And I wanted to talk a little bit about some events that we have planned over the next couple of months, and hopefully, we can solicit your support in getting the word out about those. As you may be aware, a report was issued by a community action group in April of 2018 related to diversity and inclusivity in our district's schools and the township as a whole. So, in response to this, the HRC has decided to hold a town hall to talk about the report findings on Wednesday, October 17, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. in the Township Building. We've invited leadership from our school district, the police department, and we invite all of you to attend and participate, and ask that you reach out to your constituencies and let them know that that's happening. Additionally, we've created an opportunity for the voice of our township youth to be represented on the HRC, particularly when it comes to planning and outreach education programs. So, beginning this month, we have our inaugural student representative from Haverford High School, who will be a non-voting member of the HRC. His name is Gavin Vitale. I believe he is an 11th grader at Haverford High School, and we're really happy to have him. And I would like to acknowledge the school district's support in making this happen. Another event that we're having this fall is on November 14, from 7:00 to 8:30. We'll be offering an unconscious bias workshop for community members and business owners to learn about how unconscious or implicit bias can influence our decisions and reactions, and how we can learn to counter those biases. The training's going to be conducted by Randy Duque, who is a community relations liaison with the Philadelphia Human Relations Commission. And the HRC thought this was important, given the incident at Starbucks that happened this summer, making Haverford Township business owners aware of implicit bias and how to train their employees on their own bias. And I just want to remind everybody, apparently, this is on live TV. I didn't know that. It would have come last month, had I realized that, but, that we continue to hold our quarterly public meetings, which are listed on the Human Relations webpage within the township's website, and our next public meeting is going to be Wednesday, September 26, from 7:00 to 8:00 in the Township Building. And finally, we're looking to do a township-wide event on MLK Day, which is not really looked at as a day off, but a day of service. So, we're hoping to have some sort of township-wide day of service launched through the HRC, and that would be on Monday, January 21, 2019. So, I just want to thank you all for your support and your continued efforts in making sure that Haverford Township is a place that is inclusive and diverse and welcoming to everybody. So, thanks.
Thank you.
To maybe shoot us an email with the dates that you mentioned, and maybe just a short synopsis of the event and what's for, so we can get, you know, maybe PDF. PDF, we could shoot it out to our email list. It'd be very helpful.
That'd be great, absolutely. We'll do that. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Chip. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the board on an agenda item this evening? There being none, we'll move on to item seven, the approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. D'Amelio.
To make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of August 13, 2018.
Motion made in second. Any additions, corrections, comments? Please call the roll.
Yes. Mr. Leiva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Item eight is the approval of warrants.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we approve warrant number nine of 2018 totaling $1,969,394.16, comprising the general sewer fund payroll for August 23, 2018, in the amount of $654,583.50. General fund dispersments, number nine of 2018, in the amount of $513,648.35. Sewer fund dispersments, number nine of 2018, in the amount of $485,769.40. Community development block grant fund dispersment, number nine of 2018, in the amount of $61,930.68. Capital project fund dispersment, number nine of 2018, in the amount of $244,855.50. And a credit card statement, ending August 27, 2018, in the amount of $8,606.70.
Second. Motion made in second.
Mr. President, these warrants have been reviewed by our Township Auditor. Any questions these warrants have raised, have been raised, to our Township personnel and the financial officer, and have been answered to his satisfaction. He recommends that we approve the warrants, as do I.
Thank you. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Leiva?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item nine is ordinance P-13, 2008. This is second reading.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt ordinance number P-13 of 2018. This is an ordinance authorizing the incurring of non-electoral debt by Haverford Township to refund existing 2010 and 2013 general obligation issues, and to borrow new monies to finance the cost of certain capital projects of the township, providing for the issuance of a series of general obligation bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $42 million.
Second.
Motion made in second.
Mr. President, if I may, I would like to invite Mr. Schlesinger from PFM, and our bond counsel, Mr. Richter from Reed Smith, to just come forward and give us a quick summary of the 2018 issue.
Thank you.
I'll start out with the bond market itself. We're expecting to go to the bond market, assuming you decide to move forward tonight, next Thursday. We were here a couple months ago. Amazingly, rates have not changed by much. So, most of this financing is to refinance existing debt for the 2010 bonds and the 2013 bonds, and borrow an additional $5 million or so for capital projects. The expected savings on the refinancing will be approximately $2.2 million, depending on how the bond sale goes. We're using an internet auction, which we've done in the past, which means it's a competitive sale, which means any underwriter across the country can bid on it. Whoever has the lowest overall interest rate wins. So, from our perspective, it's a good time to get to the market. Rates haven't changed by much. The Fed is meeting on the 26th. We do expect the Fed to raise rates at that time, so that getting in before that makes a whole lot of sense. That's about it from the market side. Certainly, Bill can answer any questions on the ordinance itself. Anyone have any questions on the numbers itself?
Any questions? Bill, any comments, or you? Nope?
Anything?
Well, I just wanted to point out, this ordinance was introduced back in July. Certain revisions have been made to that ordinance as introduced in July. Basically, the library project is being deferred, so that was removed from the list of projects for this bond issue. That changed the numbers. The numbers went down. The ordinance from July authorized up to 50 million, so that's reduced to 42 now. A summary of this ordinance was published in the Delaware County Daily Times on August 22, in accordance with the Local Government Unit Debt Act. So, I did provide a marked copy of the ordinance to the board, so that's what you're looking at right now.
Thank you.
For clarification, Mr. Richter, we addressed this as a second reading of the ordinance, but debt ordinances like this are approved simply with one reading. Isn't that correct? So, we made changes between now and August, so this is a new effective reading.
Well...
Is that correct?
You can make revisions to ordinances that are introduced, as long as they're non-substantive, and I certainly would consider this to be non-substantive.
Because it reduced the amount of money that was being borrowed?
Right. It's the same ordinance with just a few changes.
I would note, for anybody, when they hear about refunding or refinancing, sometimes they're concerned. Somebody buys a house in 1972, they borrow money for 30 years. In 1982, they borrow money for 30 years again. In 1992, they borrow money for 30 years again. Somehow, they're paying 50 years for a 25-year house. It's important to note in this ordinance that we are not extending the life of any of the bond issues, 2010 or 2013, and the useful life of the assets, which has to match up with the weighted, with the term of the bonds, that there is no violence done to that, to that, to those corresponding values, and that we are not extending the life of any of our debt, but saving the money dollar for dollar by reducing the interest rate.
Right.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any other questions? Mr. Gentile, would you please call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Leiva?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Item 10, ordinance P-19, 2018.
I'll introduce it, but I'm not sure why we're doing this, and just like...
Go ahead, and we'll talk about it.
I mean, I'm not saying disagree with it, I just don't know where this came from. Motion to adopt the first ring of orders, number P-19, 2018, authorizing traffic restrictions on the filing highways. Establish parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times. Oakway West Side from Glendale to a point 125 feet south thereof.
For a second?
Second.
Second. This was brought to the township by our Public Works Department. If you look at the sewer inlet, at the intersection of Oakway and Windmore Road, it's been destroyed at least two to three times by trucks making that turn there. And the reason they have to short the turn is because of parking on the opposite side of the street. They can't make the turn, so the rear axles of the truck have destroyed that sewer inlet two, at least two times. The docks crews had to rebuild the box and redo it, so that they've asked the police department and the township. Police department came to the township, requesting that we restrict parking on the one side to allow trucks to make that turn.
It's parking on Glendale?
No, this is parking on Oakway.
Parking on Oakway?
Yes. If you read, yep, on Oakway, on the west side of Oakway, from a point of Glendale Road, 125 feet up, on the west side.
Commissioner, we did an assessment on that corner over there during that construction. It doesn't really affect any houses. There's always a concern, we don't want to take parking away from any residents, but the way the houses are situated there, it doesn't take any parking away. Doesn't take parking away from residents. It does take parking away.
Yeah. I mean, I drive by there all the time, and that right-hand turn is difficult, but I never found it difficult because of cars parked on the west side.
It's not you making a turn with your car, it's the trucks that do the damage.
I understand that, but I do find it difficult. What I'm saying is, I'm not sure the cars parked on that side of Oakway have anything to do with it. It's just a difficult turn.
Well, if the cars are not parked on there, then they can actually make a wider turn. And Mr. Wexler was just saying, we, after two or three times replacing that entire Public Works and the Sewer Department...
I saw that.
They actually took a week, they just, just completed it, and a truck came and lifted it all up again.
Well, it's not only trucks that go over that. It's not. It's vehicles too. I've seen it. And the cause is the traffic coming off of Glendale, going towards Oakway, because of the way you have to make that turn, and when that traffic's coming towards you, it's rather difficult. I'm not saying I don't agree with this. I wish, I would have told about it earlier, because, don't forget, I'm having a first ward meeting October 24, and we could have presented something like this to them. But you're telling me this is urgent?
Yeah. It actually is, Steve.
It's the first reading. Excuse me, it's the first reading. You can still present it and your constituents...
But the second reading will already take place, and my meeting will still, my meeting's the end of October, October 24.
Yeah.
It's not going to do any good, but, but you're taking away traffic. I get that. I understand that. So, I just would like more time to digest this, but if you're saying it's urgent, I'll go with it, and we'll present it on October 24 and see how the residents feel about it. You are taking parking away. I think I understand what you mean. It's not hurting anyone that lives there, right there within the 120 feet of Oakway, correct?
Correct.
Has anybody spoken to them at all? I'm just curious.
I believe the special office has spoken to them. I'll find out more. I'll check with Sergeant Bedros tomorrow, and any email, I'll let you know.
He did speak with the residents on that side of Oakway. And they're, because they're, he informed me that he did, because they're ninth ward residents.
I wish somebody would have told me.
Well, if I may, Mr. President.
Yes.
It would seem to me, maybe now is a good time for the police to just describe to us. If you do undertake to restrict parking in an area, what is the notice you give to the people in that location?
Well, normally, the request will come from a commissioner, and then we'll assess the situation. If it comes from a different venue, whether it comes from Public Works or a complaint from a citizen, we usually notify the commissioner. This was a Public Works issue, and it happened twice before. We get very few requests from Public Works for restricting parking. Because of the damaging township property, we felt that we had to move forward with this. I apologize, Commissioner, you should have been notified, but it did slip through.
Right. I mean, there's two issues here, and, I'm sorry, Larry, were you going to say something further? I'll let you finish.
Oh, nothing. I guess just that, if you are saying that requests from Public Works are somewhat unusual?
Yes.
And in this particular instance, there's a concern about township property? Is that right?
Yes. Or you would have a cost on that, I wouldn't know, for repair?
Well, it's several thousand dollars, but every time we rebuild that inlet, it happens again. And we had just, just completed, and that hole, during that substantial rain event we had a few weeks ago, that actual manhole popped up, and was a safe, was a life safety issue. We barricaded it off, and then actually, our Sewer Department, it took about a week to redo. They actually dug up approximately 20 feet of both sides, and then redid it, re-cemented it, and within, I think, two or three days, Mr. Doherty became frustrated because a vehicle drove over, because they can't make the turn, because there's a car already parked.
Yeah. I'm not saying I don't disagree procedurally. I wish I would have been talked to. I'm not saying I don't disagree, but I'm also saying I've seen vehicles, other than trucks, do that, and I believe it's the way cars coming from Glendale to Oakway. And, you know, I'm glad we talked to the residents, but again, if I would have known, somebody contacted me, I would have said, well, we could have gone over and talked to them like we did with the problem on Glendale and Volnail Lane.
Yeah, but Steve, if you look at where the parking is being restricted, it's actually going to, it's going to help the people making a left off of Glendale onto Oakway, because there's, as soon as you make the turn, either from coming up Glendale or coming down...
Very familiar, I try.
Yeah, I know, and then...
And I could tell you, the right-hand turn is far worse than the left, but I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, because there's cars parked there, or, a lot of times, there's a trailer parked there, a maintenance, landscaping type of trailer, but...
And not that it's right. Usually, cars, like a normal car, won't have enough weight to lift it and destroy it, but the trucks do.
Trucks do, I understand. There'll be signs posted, obviously. When's that going to happen? It's the second reading. So, you're right. So, you're right, it still gives me, well, no, it doesn't.
Gives you a month.
But I can still let residents know.
Any other questions?
Signs will go up after the second, we're usually about 10 days, once a sign crew gets married to the second reading.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Item 11, 2019 Minimum Municipal Obligation.
Mr. President?
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move that we accept and certify the 2019 Minimum Municipal Pension Obligation for the Police and Non-Uniform Defined Benefit Plans and the Non-Uniform Defined Contribution Plan.
Second.
Mr. President?
Mr. Holmes.
President, this is the annual exercise that we go through, our chief administrative officer for our pension plans, who I believe is Thomas J. Anderson and Associates, am I correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, it's Mr. Gentili, but he is advised by Thomas J. Anderson and Associates, who advises each year of the amount that is necessary in the Minimum Municipal Obligation. Act 205, Pennsylvania law, requires this. There's two values in the minimum municipal, in the municipal obligation sheets that were provided to all of us, the first value is the, is the, is the statutorily mandated amount that the township has to commit to, the second value is a higher value, and that is the Minimum Municipal Obligation based upon the market value of our assets, as opposed to based upon the Minimum Municipal Obligation, which is done, I think, back in 2017, January 31st, or January 1st of 2017. So, to remind people in the audience who've heard us talk about this in the past, we had, in years past, we as a township, not we as any of us on this board, had taken advantage of things known as income smoothing and other things that were provided by the state to give some relief to townships when they dealt with pension issues. The problem was that relief really wasn't relief, it was just temporarily kicking problems farther down the road. We, as a township, made the decision almost a decade ago, that we were not simply going to do the minimum the state required, but that we would take a more prudent financial, take a different financial avenue and go with the higher municipal obligation. So, what is being asked to be certified today is the minimum obligation required by the state, but I remind for anybody reading the attachments and look at the agenda today, that our township actually commits to more than the statutory minimum, to preserve the health of our three pension plans. So, it is my recommendation that we adopt this motion, and that we authorize Mr. Gentili as our chief administrative officer of our pension plan to exercise his duties under the Minimum Municipal Obligation.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Wechsler.
Yes, item 12, P-18, 2018.
It's number P-18, 2018, Motion to Adopt the Second Reading of Ordinance P-18, 2018, Authorizing Traffic Restrictions on the Following Highways. Establish stop intersections, Paddock Road, north direction of travel at Woodley Road. Establish sticker parking only on Beverly Road, east side between Casimir Road and Strasmer Roads, school days, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., valid permit exempt. Special purpose parking zones across from 637 San Marino Avenue, between 634 and 640 San Marino Avenues, Bremar, PA.
Second. Motion made in second, any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Wechsler.
Yes, item 13.
Mr. President?
Mr. Siegel.
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2103-2018, changing the November regular voting meeting date from Monday, November 12th, 2018, the Veterans Day observance, to Tuesday, November 13th, 2018.
Second. Motion made in second, this is because of the township holiday being observed on Monday, we're pushing our meeting till Tuesday. Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Wechsler.
Yes, is there any member of the audience who would like to address the board on any item? There being none? Item 15, any new business?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Lewis?
There was a mistake when we passed Ordinance Number 2831-2018, which related to dogs in the park, at the Cooper Town Park, we mistakenly excluded dogs from being permitted in that park, so I don't know whether it requires another, an amendment to that ordinance, or whether we can just, what do you recommend on doing, make the correction?
You, it was via ordinance that you prohibited the dogs in the park?
Yes.
We're going to need to do another ordinance to correct it.
Okay, well, then we'll add it, we'll add it for next month.
Go from.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Any other new business?
Mr. President?
Mr. Siegel?
I don't know if it's new business, but Mr. Gentili learned, and we learned from PennDOT today, that the 2019 paving schedule was released by PennDOT, and it includes Darby Road in the township, and the new addition is Eagle Road from Township Line to Arlington. So, that is wonderful news, you know, I don't know who's responsible, I know we've complained a lot, and, you know, our state representatives and our state senator have been supporting us on this, so whoever did it, I think we're all thrilled to see that Eagle Road and Manoa, two roads that are, you know, just filled with potholes, are finally getting what's needed.
St. Dennis is going to excommunicate me if there's more work on Eagle Road between Arlington and Darby, I mean, Kevin, you can go below the radar, but I'm dead.
Well, just, just, just to clarify a little bit here, this information just came out, but we did have a meeting that was set up with Representative Vitale, Representative Santora, and I attended, and Mario and Jerry were able to attend, and it was specifically to discuss the issues with paving in township roads and the schedule that PennDOT had, and we expressed to them in no uncertain terms that essentially, the work that had been done by PICO from essentially the Y to St. Dennis and now down to Arlington, has led to half of Eagle Road being paved and the other half continuing to be this pothole-filled disaster, and...
An extraordinary amount of disruption to those people's lives.
Right, and so we've, we credited that Eagle Road be pushed up on the schedule, and after certain discussions, we were confident that that was going to happen, and it was supported via letters that both Representative Vitale and Representative Santora sent to PICO, I mean, to PennDOT, and so I'm glad to hear that this is going to happen, because everybody in the room seemed to agree that it made sense, it was a matter of getting everyone together. I think, as everyone knows, certainly since I've taken office, PICO has been ripping up Eagle Road continuously, and it's going to continue to do so to, for the infrastructure improvements, but what I, what I expressed to PennDOT and was echoed by Larry Gentili and the township, was that it just made logical sense to pave the entire road at this time, now that PICO was going to be required to pave half. So, I think in this sense, Larry, St. Dennis will be okay, given that the road is actually going to be paved, and it will be the entire road, so I'm hopeful that people...
Hope it's done quickly.
And, and the paving of roads does not take months at a time that the installation of pipe takes, so we are excited that, that the paving list has been changed, and hopefully it'll be good for the residents, certainly of the 3rd Ward, I know, and also for our businesses all along that Eagle Road strip, to not be consistently under construction.
And if I could just add, their plan was to, to pave it in 2023, so we were able to move it up to, to next year, as well as Darby Road from Westchester Pike, to Eagle Road is, is also, we were able to move that up also, and again, thanks to the support of, of Jamie Santora and to Greg Vitale for, for putting letters together and sending them to, to PennDOT in support of that.
And I'll echo the sentiment, those of us on the other side of Westchester Pike have just as many potholes from the Aqua and PICO gas work that has been done from Westchester Pike down to Township Line, it's just been a mess, and I'd also like to thank them for, they accelerated the paving of Steel Road from Drexel Road down to Vermont Road, which has just had a ton of PICO gas and Aqua work over the last year, so we're making improvements, but paving's going on this week, so the, the backup beepers will be going, so we'll be getting the phone calls at midnight that they're being kept awake, but it's only going to last for three nights, so it's on Drexel, on Steel Road, so making good progress there.
As Larry questioned, Bill, how, how far along are they with changing the entire township over from, to, you know, the gas lines? Are they finished now?
Oh, I believe they have another three years.
Another three years?
Yeah. It's a five-year initiative, and I think we're, we're in the second year, so this will be completing the second year.
Commissioner Holmes, I think that's your larger problem, is that the work's going to continue up the county line road.
That's right.
The PICO work, I mean, it stopped at Arlington, it's going to, it's going to leave my Ward, thankfully, after three years, and continue...
March right into line.
Continuing onto Windwood, and, and you'll be happy to know that I did express that Windwood, both sides of the road, is a mess and should be addressed as soon as possible, once that work is complete.
Well, thanks for looking out for me, Mr. McCluskey, I appreciate it.
We're working together there, guys. Any other, any other new business? Other business, Mr. D'Amelio?
There are a couple of things I want to remind 1st Ward residents, that I'll be hosting my 1st Ward constituent meeting October 24th, council officials will be there as well, State Senator Dylan Leach and State Representative Jamie Santora, that's Wednesday, October 24th, at 7:00 p.m., and OFR Company, I also want to remind residents about, well, you know, this is live now, so we can really do it live, about schools starting up, and driving carefully, because sometimes I think we all get a little lax in the summer, but now the children are back and running out in the streets to catch, catch buses or meet up with friends, so just be careful out there, slow down a bit for our children, that's all I have.
All right, so I just want to remind everybody about Havford Township Day, it's quickly approaching, October, it is October 6th, the first Saturday of, of October, and, you know, we all look forward to that day, it's, it's a great day to get out and support the community, and get some cool stuff, and eat some good food, so just get out and, and support Havford Township. And I also wanted, want to remind people to please slow down, as I walk some of the streets during the day, I see people, and people who you wouldn't think would, people with children in the cars, just driving as, up streets in excessive speed and driving, you know, as in they're, they're in a hurry, please slow down, remember that nothing is going to change your life like running into somebody, you hurt somebody, it's, it's not something you want to do, just drive carefully when you're on backstreets, the speed limits are, you know, most streets are 25 and 15 in these school zones, I've seen people drive through school zones going 25, 30 miles an hour, and I see it on a regular basis, so please, you know, please just slow down, you're, you're, you're not in a hurry enough to hurt somebody or to, or to hurt yourself, so please, and that's all I have.
Just to follow up briefly on, on the Eagle Road news, you know, I've talked a lot with many of the residents in that neighborhood, I mean, Eagle Road is a traffic issue, there's no, really no two ways around it, and, and the only way we improve parking situations, the only way we improve cut-through traffic in that area is to improve the flow of traffic on Eagle Road, the township has invested and has planned to improve the traffic light controls and the way the technology influences that, pushing PennDOT to pave the roads, we're doing everything we can to, to make it a little bit better and a little bit better, obviously, it's not going to totally solve the problem, but we're, we're working towards that. Along those same lines, if you drove down Darby Road in the last couple of weeks, you saw that next to Lizelle's Bridle Shop, there's the pathway that goes to the, the municipal parking lot in the rear there, behind the Darby Road businesses, that's across from the Town Tap, Oakmont Firehouse, that pathway has been completely redone over the last couple of weeks as part of a grant that we received, that's the first stage in three stages, the next stage will involve redoing that parking lot in the rear, hopefully obtaining a few more spots, will also then, the third stage will involve beautification of the area from where the Brick and Brew currently is down to where the frozen yogurt shop used to be, it'll include lighting, it'll include planters, so these are steps that the township is, is taking to address these problems and also hopefully enhance our, our community. A couple of events I just wanted to make people aware of, if I could, Havford Township Library is holding their 8th Annual Business Breakfast on September 20th, it's from 7:30 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., their website and Facebook page have more information, but any businesses in the area or residents who want to attend and support the library, it's a nice event. The Oakmont Fire Department, this is actually in October, but it's October 11th, they have their fire prevention night from 7:00 to 8:00, kids certainly welcome, kids can take a tour of one of the trucks and hold the hose and do everything else, it's, it's a fun time, and it's a, it's a night where some of the firefighters get to show off some of their equipment. There is a lot of music happening in the 3rd Ward, and for Havford Township in the next week, first specifically in Merwood Park this Wednesday night, the final concert in the park series is, you can bring out your beach chair, your towels, still no alcohol in the park, but, you know, you can, you can, you can come for a nice night and listen to some live music, and then, of course, as everyone knows, one of the larger events that takes place in the township is this Saturday, the Havford Music Fest, it takes place on Darby Road, near the intersection of Eagle and Darby, and then finishes up later that night behind the Oakmont, the old Oakmont School, which is now the Havford Township School District Building, but that goes from noon till approximately 9:00 o'clock, it's a great night, and, you know, just remember, though, when you are leaving, that it is a residential neighborhood, and be considerate of your neighbors, even if those neighbors are having their own private parties. And, oh, the Marion Golf Manor Neighborhood Association, just to touch all parts of the 3rd Ward, is having a block party this year, it's their first annual block party, it's going to be on September 22nd from 4:00 to 8:00, so if you live in that neighborhood, information should be coming out to you, but it's 4:00 to 8:00, and that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, the only thing I have is that this Sunday night begins the High Holy Days for Jewish people, and I wish everyone "LeShana Tova Tikotevu," which means may you be inscribed in the Book of Life for a good year, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. Mr. Holmes?
I have nothing, Mr. ...
Mr. Lewis?
That's the first, and I don't have anything yet either, so...
Mr. McGarrett?
Can't believe it is. A couple of things, number one, on Tuesday, the 11th of September, they're going to have Moonlight Dining from 5:30 to 10:30 up on Brookline Boulevard, also, look in October, the same time Oakmont has fire prevention, Brookline will be having their fire prevention. Couple other things that I have, number one, I apologize to the people on Woodmere Way, I know the lights have been out over there for at least five weeks, and PICO staked out the area the first week, and I think they totally forgot that they staked out the area because they haven't been back to fix it, and I've been over there several times, and I know the township has notified PICO on many occasions about this situation, and I justify anybody to take a ride along Woodmere Way at 5:00 a.m. in the morning, which I usually do, to see if the lights are on, and for five weeks now, they haven't been on, and it is basically pitch black on that street, and if I had a daughter or son, I wouldn't want them walking around at 10:00 o'clock, 9:00 o'clock at night on that street, I'll tell you that, so we'll see what we can do about getting that fixed, and that's, and Mrs. Patterson, over where you drop your mail in the mailbox, Woodmere Way and Arlington Road, always takes care of that nice little flower box there, she's done a wonderful job there for years, and continues to do it, so I thank you, Mrs. Patterson, for your work on that flower box, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Dr. Hart?
Yeah, I just have one item, the Havford EAC asked me to get an early word out, they're having a Climate Action Expo on Sunday, November 4th, from 12:00 to 5:00 at Havford College, the EAC is working with Havford College, ready for 100 of Delaware and Montgomery Counties, the Penn Environment and other Township EACs to present a Climate Action Expo, where residents and officials can get an update on climate forecasts, local, state, and federal proposed action, and more important, learn what every person can do on their own to make a difference. There'll be practical workshops, green vehicle displays, test drives, and information from There'll be practical workshops, green vehicle displays, test drives, and information from nonprofits and green businesses that can help you make a difference today.